A roll call, please.
Will everybody adjust their microphones, please?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Behrens?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Present.
Mr. Ferrex?
Yes.
Ms. Lautner?
Present.
Mr. Noonan?
Absent.
Mr. Bobo.
Excused.
Absent, excused.
Mr. Robbins?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Yeoman?
Here.
So we have a quorum. What do I do with this? Well. We don't have to review any minutes in this session.
I didn't add that.
No.
Are you working off the?
No, I'm working off the.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I have a. Oh, gotcha. That's an O one. Okay. Dr. Lee, anyways?
Well, let's, yeah, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comment. We have no public and we are not, in this session, accepting phone calls either, so we can move on. We have the one. One subject for discussion only. This is a special session that is the RFP that we put out for development of the fishing walkway at Veronica and the single bid that we had back from, received from Elmer's.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Please.
Just to bring me up to speed, because I think this might have been discussed, that's all I can think of, is it might have been discussed at that May meeting that I had phoned in and I had a bad connection on and off. So was this decided at that May Parks meeting to go out for bids on this project?
I believe it was June.
You think it was June?
Was it?
I didn't think I saw it in the minutes of June.
I'd have to look. Because the thing with the RFP is, I think that the committee can go out for an, did it go to the full commission?
That was my next question, is, did we just go out for bids on stuff at committee or does it have to go to the full board?
I thought it was for the entrance. Is this the entrance?
We did that.
No.
We did just.
I thought it was the entrance with the curb and the.
Yeah, we discussed all that.
No, that was all done. When that contract had been approved.
We did have a conversation about the parking lot itself. This is completely different.
This is different. So has the whole board discussed this?
I think they did.
Okay, that's what I couldn't.
Yeah, I don't recall which meeting it was, but I think they did. And at the time, John had said that he estimated it could potentially cost about 15 because he had talked to other members in the industry and they said it would be a minimum 15.
And Chet made it clear that the Parks and Rec Commission can put out the RFP without full county commissioners. We didn't have to take it.
Well, we don't have to take it, but I don't know that that's correct. And that's kind of like my question.
Did the request to put out a RFP go to the full county commission?
No, you don't have to do that.
RFP doesn't, but a grant does. That's the difference. A grant has, okay, all right, then that's my question. So then my next question will be, so I'm fully up to speed, is, this wasn't, was this one of our budgeted items under capital outlay? We talked about the fishing platform. Is this the fishing platform then, or take the place of it? Is that what we had in our budget?
Well, I'm not quite familiar with the fishing platform in the budget because that was always part of the grant applications. But this, no, this is not.
This is not in the budget?
No, no, it's not a fishing platform. It's not, I mean, it's not part of what was discussed as fishing platforms. This is.
The slope, maybe more safe, right?
This is the safer walkway, immediate surface next to the pond in the most heavily used fishing area, which is around the old putting green, practice putting green at Veronica.
Okay, so this is reshaping that putting green. Okay, we need to discuss that a lot in the past.
We have, and we discussed making it a complete beach, et cetera, et cetera, the insurance. Risk advisor said, "Don't make it a beach," et cetera.
Yes, okay.
And this is what we've come up with.
This was the existing grade.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
That's better. Gravel it so that wheelchair could access.
Does that really have that? Is that the O one?
Well, it's a basic one.
So exactly, it will lessen the slope.
Immediately.
Or move it back and then add a walkway down there to take the wheelchairs to ride on?
Well, add the walkway around the semicircular pond edge.
And then put six by eight timbers to control them.
Eight feet wide, topped in a hard pack surface that we will still do even if we determine we need to top that with something else again next year.
So Elmer's?
For full ADA acceptability.
Elmer's would do the grading and build the platform?
No, there is no platform.
Pathway.
Pathway.
Yep.
Pathway.
But Elmer's would put in the wood?
Curbing, if it is required for ADA. We don't need, we don't need any sort of railing along this to meet disability standards because the railing requirement depends on the distance from the surface to the.
Okay, so it's a gravel walkway, wood border. Wood border is it?
Right at water level. And because it's right at water level, it does not require a rail.
Yep, yeah, I, okay. But they'll do it all. Okay.
There've been several other hands. Steve, you were first, okay?
What is the length of the pathway?
About sixty, about sixty feet.
Just sixty feet.
Now, that does not therefore include an ADA access pathway from the parking lot. However, I've learned of a specific access grant from Rotary charities that doesn't have to go through their full process. It's a, it's a separate grant program that a small committee kind of set aside from their full charities, again, procedure and process, which is lengthy and complicated at times. But this is specifically for disabled access. And that grant application will go in, in order to extend from the parking lot down to this work, that grant application will go in in September.
He said it was eight foot wide?
Eight foot wide.
And I note on here that the timbers are going to be provided. Where are they coming from? Not, not by Elmer's, but by us.
I don't know.
I understood, John, that it was the road commission. You know, I shouldn't be quoted for that.
No, he did indicate, I remember him indicating a specific timber that the road commission has.
Had.
Okay, okay, I just wondered. I noticed that on there and I didn't see any other reference to it, so just wanted to make sure we had those so we didn't start on the project and say, whoops, we're going to have to find those.
Right.
Okay, so that's going to be the road commission and they're going to provide that. Yeah, and I don't know about purch, I don't know any detailed answer to the question, do we buy them from the road commission? I presume.
Yeah, well, maybe we could just mill some locusts because they'll last as long.
They'll last longer.
Or longer than the womanized stuff.
And I have the locusts.
You do?
Oh, I do too.
Well, I have, I have a friend with a mill.
Now, I've already paid enough to take down another one. Too bad.
That's true.
Eight foot wide because John Pope.
Eight foot, eight inches.
No, oh, I'm talking about the width of the pathway.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Because we've had discussion at the Veronica Valley Committee level, should it be six feet wide or eight feet wide? Eight feet was John Pope's recommendation because the Dumore Tool Rig will make the carving of all of that and leveling and et cetera.
Oh, it's go wider. We won't be sorry. It's go wider.
Yeah, well, we won't be, and that was the decision. Exactly.
Okay.
We won't be sorry. It'll be wide. It'll be, we will really reshape that area, but we won't be sorry, I don't think at all.
Dave, are you going to confirm that timber stuff or how are we going to move with that? If this is approved, are you going to be contacting them or how's that handled?
Yeah, you'll have to go back and talk to John Pope when he's out of the hospital.
Yeah. Normally, my answer would have been, no, John Pope is going to do it.
I know, perplexed, I see that.
He's in the hospital right at the moment. He's out at the end, or he's out by next week, so we can move on that. This is Josh Fokler from Elmer's. Josh has informed us that it would be September, sometime before they started the work, but it would get done this year. The conclusion date in the RFP was November 1st.
For John Pope.
Okay.
Because John made sure a lot of things got done.
Right.
Thank you, John.
Good.
Okay, okay.
Is the DQ going to get involved because you're messing with the water sides?
Because we're not messing with the water sides. We're only.
Sloping.
Yeah, and we're only dealing with what's already surface above the water. We don't have to get in any permitting.
Bless you.
Thank you.
I can fill out the permit app for the county.
Oh, for the soil.
Soil erosion control.
We're not disturbing more than an acre, are we? Or is it too close?
We're relatively close to a water body.
Yes.
And stream.
Can't the, can't the drain commissioner just waive that? I would think the drain commissioner would waive that. If he wanted to. All right, so you're looking for a recommendation today, so.
I live in a swamp, so.
Who else has done your committee?
John Walter, John Pope, Steve Christensen.
Is this a motion that you wanted to make because you're on this committee?
We could, we could read the motion that the committee made.
That'd be great.
Do you want me to do it?
Whoever wants to make the motion.
Someone has to make it. I'm just looking to see if we got it. I don't have it.
It should be on a sample EDS.
Yep.
All you did was.
Did you want to?
Okay, the motion from the committee said, "I move to recommend that the Leona Parks and Rec Commission approve the bid from Crane, Elmer's Crane and Dozer for the construction of a fish pond pathway at Veronica Valley Park in an amount not to exceed $23,500. Funds to come from 970,000."
So you're recommending?
Recommendation to the Parks and Rec Commission.
You moved to recommend, yeah.
So the committee recommended to this commission.
Support.
To do that and now we're, I think Dave would entertain a motion.
But is.
Of this commission.
You said 22,000 something? It is.
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand, okay. I just want to make sure of the number, okay.
So the committee recommended for us to do it as a commission.
Okay, did you just read though, "I move to recommend to the Leona County Board of Commissioners to approve the bid?"
No.
Oh, you read a different one. We don't have.
I just read what the committee said.
What the committee said.
Gotcha, okay.
I could, I could do that motion. Okay.
Please do.
I'll do the motion. "I move to recommend that the Leona County Board of Commissioners approve the bid from Elmer's Crane and Dozer for the construction of a fish pond pathway at Veronica Valley Park in an amount not to exceed $23,500. Funds to come from 970,000."
I'll second that. That's good. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
And the bid is good through November when you think you're going to begin?
September.
September or September, completed by November?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's good for that long?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If this was like steel or piping, then maybe not, but there's not, it's just.
And part of this, Melinda, is there's this grass involved in this majority. And Steve would say the best time to go grass is the first week of September. So the effort is to get a grass base.
Seeds and grass too?
What, I'd like to ask you a question. You know, I, I think about the amount, and we just mentioned it to each other, that the per-footage amount is quite a bit. So what exactly is going to be done other than leveling and then a perimeter setup and gravel put down?
We got to take down the bank, the whole, I guess it's an old.
Putting green.
Putting green.
Because I haven't looked it over to assess at all.
Yeah, we got to, we got to cut all that down from what it is now, which is much greater. We're putting it at one and 12 slopes, I mean, we're moving to the third. We got to reset, or respread that in a different spot and seed everything, so.
Thank you.
You did the seeding too?
Yeah.
These are net type stuff you usually put down or just?
I plan on making a slope down to half the street, I'll ultimately make it, and the rest is going to do.
Yeah, sure. Keep it so it doesn't run.
For those, for those.
Hey, guys.
Right.
Well, I just want to provide a little more background. For those of you who are newer to the commission, the rest of us know, well, Steve, Melinda, Todd, myself, know, we've discussed this as kind of a priority, I think, since the day I commissioned five years ago.
Been a year, yeah.
Yeah, it's been years. We, the banks going down from the old putting green are just too steep to be safe. And kids tumble down. And then what little, little surface that's then between the actual slope and the water is not level. It's not even, and at times it's full of, I don't know if it's muskrat holes or voa holes or whatever. So it's, it's providing an absolute semicircle of a flat, hard pack surface with a curb for safety.
Yeah, I did notice the grade changes that needs to be done. And you mentioned something that I've had a lot of trouble with. In the event, we already, because we already have mole problems there, is there some sort of a, maybe they don't travel through gravel, I don't know, but they seem to travel through everything. Is there a perimeter that we can set up? Because that would really disrupt the walkway if moles were digging underneath.
Right, it's going to be six inches compacted. Agreed, with, I believe there's fabric underneath.
A lot more stone than clay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So and then there's to be fabric underneath, but it's going to be six inches of that. If something does tunnel under that, the fabric should hold.
Okay.
Within reason, I mean, if you get like three or four tunnels.
For voa, for voas, not moles, but for voas, that barrier would have to be at least two feet deep.
Wow.
Because voas will tunnel that deep.
And then a muskrat, it's a whole different animal, I don't think.
Right. Well, the beaver might want to make a trench.
True.
I've seen that.
Yeah, the muskrats is what I would be worried about by that one. I saw a couple holes in the side of the bank.
Okay, thank you.
So Dave's right. We discussed this for a lot of years. I guess we talked about the platform. I guess I had my mind. It was a platform or the deck that would have gone out over this and we would have fished from that.
That certainly was, Melinda. I do remember that was part of discussions and.
And then we decided to go this way instead and just make it a flat and level and not hit the deck and.
Really for economy's sake. It is a real improvement in safety. The fishing committee from Fish Day, their recommendation was to make it an evenly sloped, sanded beach. Insurance, risk advisors, don't make it a beach. You'll invite people to swim in it.
Correct.
And really, the discussion then really did come around to, well, you know, we can do this level, hard pack walkway with a curb for the safety's sake, much more cheaply than some of these other discussions. Then in the grant applications, Melinda, to the state, we added over two additional spots on the pond, an actual platform.
Oh, okay.
That's not now part of.
It could be added in other areas.
Yeah.
I see somebody fishing off the bridge when I came up here just now.
Check, Melinda. The slope on the bridge is a one and 12 slope that meets the handicap slope requirement.
Good.
A question for you related to Veronica. Is, is there a pathway for handicapped people to get back into the woods for hunting? Because my uncle did a lot of that and we helped him. He was in a wheelchair for years. He was a great hunter. Then he became crippled and then we'd push him, which wasn't easy. We'd switch back and forth. But I do know there's lots of deer there and we want to protect the property there so that we can continue to hunt there. People, I haven't hunted there before, but I just was thinking, that's not a bad thing to think about is maybe a pathway much smaller, but maybe a pathway so somebody could get back into the woods a little ways.
This is really.
Just a couple meetings ago, Volkovich was in here and he takes this.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I heard everything he said.
That was a secret, so don't put that.
Well, one time we had proposed paved walkways, paving our, some of our trails back there and the cost was just astronomical. But that doesn't mean it might not work in the future because that's a great idea.
Right, and just, and just hard pack though, not paving it, just because you can go over hard packed ground.
You can get a lot of places having guest.
Sort of stuff.
Yeah.
It's just tough when you're going over ruts and mole dips and things like that.
You know, in, in the application for state grants, which didn't go through, we included additional trail development, including up to ADA standards. So, and none of that was written in stone, but the point is, that's something our committee will look at is additional trail development and one for access by disabled hunters.
Yeah.
Might be, might become exactly something we want to do.
I think that would be a pretty incredible goal, to set something like that up.
Yeah, right, right back from the, that alternative parking lot, that seems to be the area of highest interest for hunting. That, that has a lot of potential back there.
Northwest corner.
Now, we do have a motion in a second on the table?
Yes, whose for today? Lady, okay.
We just want to clear my, clear my head on that. Any more discussion?
I'm just curious. Can you tell us, I'm familiar with 22 AA gravel, but I don't, I'm familiar with 6A stone. Does that pack well real good?
It, it, it is a bigger stone. It does have some fines in it. It does pack fairly well. I think my proposal, I misspoke and said 6A. I think on the drawing it says 6AA, which 6AA is a crushed stone, and that's what I, that's what I pulled, I just didn't remove that extra A on there. 6A isn't crushed, so if there's not a lot of fines, 6AA.
So we should have another A on there?
Yeah, it's 6AA.
6AA, okay.
The double A is crushed, so.
I see, okay.
So it's a crushed stone, so there's the fines that are in it that'll help it.
So that actually packs just as well as the 22 AA?
Uh, no, it still stays a little bit loose, but it, it does.
So that's wobbly. Why, why do we do that? Because the 22 AA works so well. If you're like, when it's used well, it packs down so good.
It's what was listed on the specs.
I'm sorry, can't hear.
It's what was on the, in the bed, in the big package.
The proposal, that's what they asked for.
Yeah. And it certainly could be, and it's, the other one is it's 21 AA on the bottom. Might have pulled. But it's 21 AA, so it's a crushed stone. It's a crushed gravel, and that does lock up pretty good as a good base. So that could be something to consider is just bring that all the way up to the top and then.
So we don't know what we're voting on.
Yeah, we're building, what it is, is it's three inches of 21 AA and three inches of 6AA. That's what, that's what I'm building as a grain.
I don't know enough about it. I just know that to have the best compacted ground for a trail is a good thing. Instead of being wobbly and, you know, kicking stuff around.
There's a stone we used.
There's a stone that we used in the oil field. It was called Afton Stone for our roadways. And, and that stuff packs like concrete and you can't move it and there's no moles going to get under it.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think when you build a, a road, you add it to gravel though, right? You add it to a sand and.
I have no, we, we didn't add much sand to it. It was mostly stone. And it, and, and the more, the heavier the truck, the more compacted it was.
Another option, I guess, would be millings. You can use a milling, which is just ground up roadway, asphalt. So, I mean, there's.
With, with what we have written in here as far as cost goes, okay, is there something that's equal to that that you think is better?
I can, if you would.
Cost wise?
I can make some recommendations and, you know, and so on.
So we don't go over the 23,500?
Right, I can make some recommendations that would be possibly a better option with no extra cost.
I would modify my original motion to put the caveat to give Josh the ability to modify the material for a better compaction at no extra cost.
I don't think you actually have to put that in the motion because the contract or the RFP gives us room to.
Okay.
Kind of similar to what we did with a different RFP for, well, the wildlife and wetlands. We, we had the ability to work with the person we select to modify the terms that we want. So the motion we're mostly concerned with is the dollar amount and the fund that's coming out.
I think there's a consensus.
Scratch, scratch that?
No, well, as a motion, but let's just, as a consensus, I support that and I think the board does, so.
Yeah, it seems like a, it seems like a no brainer. It's a good, good, good lead in and we'll trust Josh to.
As long as.
Give us the best thing that we could have.
You have my contact, so if you send it to me, I'll send it out to everyone.
All right.
Yeah, I'm going to look in, what I'm going to look into is the price that it was. We did the historic tar trail where it's the gravel and it's a special mix, so I'm going to look into that. I mean, because that's a hard pack ADA, I mean, that's probably a good option.
Yeah, we have one that's going to wash either.
Thank you.
Right, and that hasn't had any issues, I don't think, so.
No. All right.
Good. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you for the bid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's hard to get a bid from anybody.
Right, I was thinking we were going to get skunked and he showed up at 15 minutes despair.
Josh, what is your last name?
Fokler. F-O-C-K.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're a movie.
So any further discussion? Because we have a motion on the table. Okay. Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Behrens?
A vote yes?
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrex?
Yes.
Ms. Lautner?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan, he's not here. Mr. Bobo. Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And Mr. Yeoman?
Yes.
So it passed by consensus? I think that concludes our business. So I would entertain, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, we have.
Second. A public comment.
Follow your agenda.
And commissioner comment. Additional commissioner comment.
Can I ask, Melinda, did you go to the, the park, the?
Well, Tetler?
Yes, did you?
Yeah, we went to the picnic.
Okay.
Yep, we had, there was food, two food trucks showed up and were there. Very light crowd though, which is not surprising considering that by skipping a year, you kind of lose your momentum where everybody plans on that first Sunday every August. But it was a great day and like I say, not, not a bad crowd for, for missing a year. And food was great. I don't know the name. I know the one was Cracked. And I don't remember, I don't remember the name of the other food truck that was there. They did burgers and brat type things. It was really good.
I know Brenda Bugatti was thrilled and she was excited to have a little booth.
And Brenda Bugatti, I know, and I bought and paid them at two of her items. They were excellent. So, yeah, kids got some cookies and, yeah, Brenda Bugatti was there, sweeties. And yes, there was three, including her. And what else? It was, it was a good, I think it was a good, interesting first time trying. We didn't get to use a grub shack. They had music under the pavilion.
Melinda, did you have it open so people could see it or?
No, but, no, there was music set up under the pavilion, so people got to see that. But, yeah.
Thank you.
But they did notice it and several people thanked me for the grub shack and how nice it looked and they're all excited. Actually, they want to see it the next year. So if we haven't opened, the windows are open now, so they can see us, but they're very excited about it. Several of them said thank you for it. Several of them said thank you for it. And the flower beds do look nice, the one garden up there, I should say. And people remarked on how nice that looks right now.
Excellent. Well, all, no, I haven't had a motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all for getting here for the special session. It's going to move this along.
And it's a great idea. As long as you follow up and get that empty path established, about four feet wide is adequate. Seriously, four feet would be more than adequate for a pathway, three for
Are there other ways?
For the hunt, for the hunters, yeah.
Yeah. Is there like a motorized, like a gator or all trained vehicle that they could get a, a special dispensation to use?
Just, just a motorized wheelchair, there's lots of them out there with the soft wheels.
Yeah.
You know, you don't need more than three feet wide.
Right.
It minimizes the
But those really don't need a hard packed surface so much, do they? Or do they? You don't want roots and
Yeah, because I mean, some of these people got, have harder wheels, that way they wouldn't have difficulty